of justice for all, no matter what race, gender, criminal record, sexuality, or citizenship. We are also the only organization, civil rights organization nationally to have an initiative formed around child welfare, specifically closing the disparity and the disproportionate gap of African-American children within our foster care system nationally. The reality is that today we come to one of the most historic spaces when it comes to foster care nationally, the San Pasquale Academy. And today you're going to hear from several speakers, or a small list of speakers, who will talk about how San Pasquale Academy has helped them. And the director of San Pasquale Academy, the administrator, Tia Moore, will talk about what the vision and what the foresight has been to ensure the success of the youth in our foster care system who have come through San Pasquale Academy. So before I speak, I'm going to do something a little different that usually you know that I'll talk first, but I'm going to back up to allow Iman Mansour Ponse, who is a student here, to come forth first. Following her, we would then bring up Viviana Penn, who is alumni of San Pasquale Academy like myself, and then I will give our speech. And I also want to say that Supervisor Jim Desmond today was the first supervisor and the only supervisor so far to make an appearance and to come to this school to see exactly what San Pasquale Academy has done. And we will share those photos following this press conference. I will make sure my office gets those photos of the supervisor touring the campus as we are looking at a solution going forward. Before Iman comes, I want to also say that we are doing what we need to do in regard to working on unilateral levels with state, federal, and local county officials. That was my reason for bringing the county supervisor here. Supervisor Nathan Fletcher, the chair of the Board of Supervisors, as well as Supervisor Anderson, Joel Anderson, Supervisor Tara Lawson Raymer, and Supervisor Nora Vargas have all been invited to do what Supervisor Jim Desmond did today, to come and listen to the students, to hear and to see the historic academy's presence and what it's done for our foster youth community. And they're all invited to join us for a tour of San Pasquale Academy. So at this time, let us welcome Iman Mansour Ponse, if I said that right, a student here at SPA, to share a few words.
Hello.
If we can have Iman saying his first and last name, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Iman Mansour Ponse. I am a current resident here at SPA. And I dropped out of high school, my two and a half first years of high school. I was looking at a life of minimum wage jobs, no education, nothing. But then I entered the system, didn't go to a foster home, came straight to San Pasquale Academy after going to Polinsky. And so I came to SPA not knowing the area, the people, or the amount of support that I would be getting. Looking back, looking at where I'm at now, I have been accepted to three Cal State universities and am planning to attend one of them this coming fall. I don't know where I would have been at, what I'm going to do in my future, but all I know is I have San Pasquale Academy's support, whether it's going to continue to be a place or I'll just have the people who supported me my whole ride, educational ride, and I know I will continue to have that support. Speaking for the underclassmen and my current peers here at San Pasquale Academy, they are heartbroken and torn because they are unsure of what their future looks like now. They were promised before they got here that this would be their last home, this would be their last placement, and this would be their permanent home. They could come back here whenever they want. I was promised that too. It breaks my heart to know that I will not be able to come back here. I know the people and the family that I've created here are different than the plate itself, but I'd love to come back to one place to know my whole support teams here. Can you spell your name for us? Iman Mansour Ponse.
Thank you, Iman. And at this time, you'll hear from a former classmate of mine, 2010. We were here together, San Pasquale Academy, Ms. Viviana Penn.
Hi, I'm Viviana Penn. Would you like me to spell it for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yes, I am a former student here at San Pasquale Academy. I graduated from here. I feel like there is no way to prepare to speak about losing your home, not only my home, but my family, also my job, because I work here as a student nurse. I feel like San Pasquale, well, I know, San Pasquale has been my support system from the day that I actually came here. I was actually scared to come here just because it was so far away and seeing all the big mountains and everything was just different, but then when I got here, there was just so much support, so many kids that I can relate to because even still now, 20 generations coming through here with powerful stories of so many generations of survivors, women, men, that are all around the world now, who have the opportunity still to come back. And actually, San Pasquale invited me back when I needed to fall back on something, and they also invited my daughter back. I feel like I'm almost like lost for words. I feel the same exact way that I felt when I first was placed into the system, when me and my siblings were taken away from our mom. I feel like when I'm here on the campus, I'm not only a mother to a seven-year-old daughter who loves everyone here, who she calls, there are students here who she calls her sibling, but also feel like when I'm here on campus, there's times that I take the role as a mother, so I feel like I'm being separated from my kids. I also feel I can relate to a lot of the students as my siblings, so I feel like I'm being once again separated from my siblings, but we are actually in a happy home. We're not a broken family, so we don't need to be fixed. There's no reason for us to close. The low enrollment situation, that's not something that cannot be fixed, that the county can't work on sending more kids here. There's so many kids that are bouncing around foster homes now unhappy. I've also experienced, even in the foster care system bouncing around to 13 different placements, I still experienced neglect, verbal abuse, bullying from my foster parents. It was not the ideal that whoever, for someone to be able to take away a home and break apart a family like this, you would have to experience something like this yourself to be able to make a decision to break up something like this. I don't know exactly what else to say. Yeah, I don't know what else to say.
No, thank you. Thank you, Viviana. And at this time, I want to bring forth the Friends of San Pasquale Academy Liaison. The Friends of San Pasquale Academy have been critical. When the county talks about they have been providing the big check for this campus, I want to be very clear that there are friends and there are people who have invested in this community, in this community of San Pasquale Academy. And Debbie Severson has been in direct contact with all of the funders of San Pasquale, and she can speak directly to what they have done and what they have pledged to continue to do. Ms. Debbie Severson.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Severson. I'm a development liaison for San Pasquale Academy. I have been with the academy for the past 20 years since it opened, and I want to make sure that it is understood that the San Pasquale Academy, our donors out there, put their arms around the kids to make sure that they receive the support both financially and hands-on to all of our kids here at San Pasquale Academy. The donor base is huge throughout this entire county as well as across the country. They provide critical, critical needs for the kids and make them feel like they really belong. They include all the sports activity, they include all the graduation opportunities for the kids. Every child on that stage at graduation receives scholarships, no matter what their future brings, whether it's starting in a job, where they will go into temporary housing, or they go into a dorm, or they go into a trade school, or a four-year university, or a two-year. Every child is provided with financial support from our donors and from the Friends of San Pasquale Academy to make sure that they know that they have the support, they have the arms around them to make sure that they can go forward. Also, when the students leave San Pasquale Academy, when they've graduated, this is home to them. They are a graduate of San Pasquale Academy, and they have a support crew behind them of all of our donors to make sure that they can take the next step and go forward. So to all of the people that are out there, please understand that this is a community of San Diego County and beyond that puts their arms around the kids to make sure that they have that financial support and the other support that's required for them to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Severson. At this time, you'll hear from the former San Diego County Board of Education Chair, Mr. Mark Powell.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the San Pasquale Academy and the students here. I appreciate everybody back here, everybody supporting the San Pasquale Academy, giving a voice to the voiceless, to the students here who are often not heard. One thing I want to make perfectly clear for everybody, and the students here know it, the San Pasquale Academy is not a congregate care center for foster kids. It's not a group home. San Pasquale Academy is an academy, it's a school. Look around, they got a gym, they got a softball court, they got a cafeteria, they have classrooms. This is definitely a school. Every one of the politicians that I see on TV that were campaigning told the public, we want to put an end to homelessness, we're going to find a solution to homelessness. Well, it looks like some of those same politician's solution is to shut down the one facility that does prevent homelessness. Foster kids are at the highest risk after they turn out of foster care to be homeless, suffer from mental health conditions, and substance abuse. The same criteria that puts somebody on the streets, this university or this academy helps prevent. Why do you want to shut down the one thing that prevents homelessness? We need to keep the San Pasquale Academy open. We need to support our students, the staff, the teachers, and the many people who've benefited over the years from the San Pasquale Academy. Shutting it down in the middle of a global pandemic is nothing short of heartless. Let's keep it open at a minimum, 24-month carve-out, so we can regroup and figure out exactly how we're going to move forward with the San Pasquale Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. So, over the last few weeks, the People's Association of Justice Advocates, and following me, Tia Moore, the administrator of San Pasquale Academy, will close us out. Over the past few weeks, the People's Association of Justice Advocates and I have been very involved in preserving the future of San Pasquale Academy. It was just weeks ago that students on this campus, the over 70 students that currently live here, were told, not by the county, not by staff, and I'm talking county staff, not by state officials, but by the San Diego Union Tribune, that they would lose their home. I think that it is completely egregious that students and our foster youth found out in a Sunday morning paper that they would lose their home when they were entitled to know the day that the state sent a letter to county officials. County officials garnered that letter and held it until February 19th, when they informed staff, and I found a lot of this out through a tour that I recently took, when they informed staff on a Friday at right around 5:00 PM, not even really making it clear what exactly they were asking Spas, what exactly they were asking of SPA. Then, February 21st, this rolls out in the media, and it was clear that county officials knew that they were waiting until the very last minute to inform staff on this campus, and they knew that the paper was going to run the story, so they told at the last minute staff on the campus, which did not give staff enough time to have a discussion, a trauma-informed discussion, with the youth on this campus about what their future home would be, which did not give staff and students enough time to organize a plan in regard to what exactly the state was asking. And many have asked, well, what is this coming from? AB 403, state legislation that launched in 2015, federal and state legislators began to see the future of foster care by taking youth out of congregate settings and putting them in foster homes. As a former foster youth of San Diego County of 13 years, after going through eight different placements and after the loss of my parents, I know firsthand that the reality is that professionals don't know best, but it is those with lived experience that know. Unfortunately, in 2015, when state and federal legislators began to look at the future of foster care, they did not include one group in that discussion, the lived experience and those who are currently in foster care. It is insulting and egregious that they continue to practice these kinds of governance because they are not interested, in fact, in hearing from those with lived experience, but they continue to make decisions without them. The state legislation that was acquired in 2015 then led to a memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding, actually, between county and state officials. Senator Tony Atkins then and others began to gather around carving a specific extension for San Pasquale Academy that would extend through the end of this year. Well, actually, there wasn't originally a date on the extension, it was just that the MOU could be terminated at any time between the county or the state, and that for now, basically, there will be an extension. Well, that extension has come to an end because the state has decided to terminate the extension of San Pasquale Academy citing low enrollment, a low census, as well as citing state and federal law. My challenge to state officials and to county officials is, well, let's look at why enrollment is so low. And in my discussions with staff and students and those who have been involved in this process, as well as former foster youth, it is clear that the county of San Diego started in trying to sway away from San Pasquale Academy to stop sending or referring many youth to San Pasquale Academy. We want to know how many students or how many youth within our foster care systems over the years, over the course of the last five years, have been referred to San Pasquale Academy. It would be good for county officials to release those numbers. But on top of this, all of this, it is very clear that based upon our correspondence with the state, as we issued a letter first asking for an extension to December 31st, 2021, then it became clear after I took a tour here that the extension needed to go until June 2022, to allow more time for alumni, students currently on the campus, as well as campus officials and stakeholders to come together with county officials and state officials to figure out what the future of San Pasquale Academy looks like. But we have a county chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Nathan Fletcher, who continues to cite that this is a state issue. And my call to him is that this is not a state issue, this is a local issue. You have a responsibility for the 2,500 youth in our foster care system, and Nathan Fletcher, you have a responsibility to the 70 youth on this campus today. So today, it is very clear in my correspondence with state officials that they have sent a letter back that made it very clear where they actually stand on San Pasquale Academy. In this letter that was issued back to my office on March 5th, 2021, it notes, "Dear Reverend Harris, thank you for your communication about the memorandum of agreement or understanding with San Diego County for the San Pasquale Academy pilot. Since the inception of the pilot project, the California Department of Social Services, CDSS, and San Diego Human Services have been engaged in a process of evaluating this service modality. Given a number of circumstances, including the changes in federal and state law that further advance a policy objective to have youth in foster care living in families in the community, the continuing decline of the census of the program, and that this site would no longer be eligible for federal funding effective October 21, it became clear to both CDSS and San Diego County Human Services, or San Diego, the county of San Diego, that the project would not be viable into the future." So the conversation that this is a state issue is not the truth. And I call on Supervisor Nathan Fletcher, as well as the Board of Supervisors, to apologize to the over 70 students on this campus immediately and to turn your perspective around because you have failed these young people by not telling them the truth. It is in black and white here, in writing from the state to my office, that you actually have had a hand in the closure of San Pasquale Academy. It says, "CDSS and San Diego County have come to the conclusion that this project would not be viable." So you actually do have a hand in the closure of San Pasquale Academy. And finally, it says, "The MOU allows for either party to terminate the pilot with a 60-day notice. Nonetheless, CDSS prudently provided notification six months in advance of the termination to minimize disruption for youth in the program." But disruption was not minimized because county officials failed to get the letter that state officials sent to San Diego County officials on the week of February 6th. So disruption has in fact happened. And finally, the letter from the state says, "CDSS is in regular communication with the county and will continue to engage them in a problem-solving and technical assistance to ensure the youth have alternative options." My challenge is for 20 years, San Pasquale Academy has been the home and a haven to many of our most vulnerable San Diegans, particularly our foster youth. The North County Campus, which was the first in the nation residential home for dependents of the juvenile court, received word in the last few months that they would have to close their doors. Yet the county of San Diego, in my perspective, has no plan for the youth, the over 70 youth on this campus. Yet the county of San Diego has not cited the decline in foster families because the reality is that families have actually declined in fostering youth throughout the pandemic. And yet, we are not having a discussion about October closure in the middle of a pandemic. A pandemic where not one case on this campus has been COVID-19, particularly of the students. Not one student has gotten COVID-19. On a campus where students are looking to finish their graduation and their school year, which was swept aside throughout the pandemic because schools were closed. But the reality that we're facing is that county officials don't know what to do with the over 70 youth. That's what they don't want to tell the media, that's what they don't want to tell the true story. They don't have a plan. And so today, I am calling on, number one, county supervisors to take a tour like Supervisor Jim Desmond did today. Stop governing from the seat of looking over people and start governing from the heart of talking to people. Make a visit to San Pasquale Academy to see the young people, to talk to the students, to listen to the staff, to have a discussion, and to see this beautiful campus that is available to our foster youth across San Diego County. Have the courage to invest, at least in an extension. From October to June 2022, I call on the county supervisors to extend San Pasquale Academy effective June 2022 for a closure, an extended closure. And in between that time, I call on county officials, alumni, students, and all of us to come together to work with state legislators to amend AB 403 and carve out a special section in the legislation for San Pasquale Academy's future. The real reality is this, as San Pasquale Academy has played a role in thousands of young people's lives like mine, as a former foster youth, as someone who was on this campus I can speak to, yes, everything's not perfect, nothing is. I'm sure Child Welfare Services could tell you that. But the reality is that we must come together to govern from a place of understanding and listening to people, and not from a place of what we think is best for people without hearing from them directly. I call on the county of San Diego to extend San Pasquale Academy's closure date, and I call on all supervisors to make a visit to San Pasquale Academy to see for themselves what San Pasquale Academy is doing. Don't talk from a podium, make a visit, make a tour, come and talk to the students like I did. Yet I'm a former student having a discussion with current students. And today, San Diego County Supervisor Jim Desmond made a visit, being the first supervisor throughout this whole issue, to make a visit to San Pasquale Academy. Have the courage to do what Supervisor Desmond did, to join us in having a discussion about the future of SPA. Finally, I will say this, we will continue to advocate for the future of San Pasquale Academy and for the 2,500 youth in our child welfare system. The time is out for deciding what is best for our youth without listening to them and getting their input first. It is time out for governing from a place of a podium and looking over from the ivory towers instead of taking a walk on the streets to actually hear from those impacted by the policies you are inducting. Today, there must be a difference in how we look at our foster youth. They have a voice, and they should be allowed to give input on what their future looks like without interference from policymakers and professionals who often do not talk to the people affected. My call to action today is that the future of SPA will continue, short-term, that we extend this facility through June 2022. Long-term, that we come together between alumni, current students, staff and stakeholders and the county to figure out how to get a carve-out in the state legislation that extends San Pasquale Academy permanently, not temporarily, not through a simple MOU carve-out that happens quickly, but permanently, to keep San Pasquale Academy functioning in some way, shape, and form, even if it means it needs to evolve a little bit. We're not against evolving, but what we are against is a discussion happening without a collective table of input. Ms. Tia Moore, the director of the administrator of San Pasquale Academy, will now speak.
Welcome, and thank you guys for coming out today. I would first like to say, actually give an apology to my students, my staff, and my community on how they found out about the closure. We have not been formally apologized to since that article came to fruition. I also like to let you guys know that this academy is a home, it's a community, it's been here since 2001. We look forward to celebrating a 20-year anniversary this year, and unfortunately, this news has put a damper on that. All I would like to say is that our commitment to our students is forever, and I am humbled by the outpour of support from our alumni and from our current students. As a director of an academy that houses foster youth, it's amazing, the student voice, and the students behind me are former students here. This is the work that we do. They are an example of what we provide in this community. I also like to say that I'm surprised that, you know, we've been here 20 years, we could talk about the decline in foster youth. Has anybody ever thought it could be because of this community? It's been 20 years. And I know for a fact that our students, we're talking about Viviana Penn, she's a parent, other students are parents, and you know what? They have their children, and they learn those skills here. They are taxpayers. There are individuals that want to transition out to this community and be successful, and we hope that we've helped them do that. All I ask is... All I ask is that there's this promise out there that the county is willing to keep. We're we're giving that those kids these promises. And I hope that we are allowed to continue to do so. Again, thank you for all the support. Um we appreciate your time. Your efforts, your calls, your signings of your petitions. All we all we want to do is what we've always wanted to do, and that is to take care of the youth here in San Diego County. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take questions now from the media. And before I take questions, let me be clear. There is a population of foster youth that they cannot ever account for. There will always be foster youth who are between the ages of fourteen and eighteen, like I was. Who may not be able to be taken into a foster home. And the reason why there is a need for a San Pasquale Academy is because we need a place where youth who might be too old. Or foster families are not willing as willing to take in older foster youth, there needs to be a place like SPA that is in existence to take in. Those populations of young people who may be getting up there in the age group and need a place to go. And so that is the significance of of that population that the county cannot run from and that they must address. And you can't address it by closing the academy down. I'll take questions at this time.
Our demographics is um we basically disproportionately number of uh minority students. Currently reside here at the academy. I can give you an exact breakdown if you'd like. Okay.
And we'll release that to the to the media uh in a press release as well on the the breakdown. And that speaks to a certain point, right? It deals with disproportionality. Here we go again. We decide we're going to move uh these young people out. We don't talk to them. And then it's disproportionately affecting children of color. So so once again, uh our county chairman has the opportunity to. To address inequity in this foster care system and he fails to do it again. And this has been a collect, I want to be very clear, my organization, maybe not SPA. But my organization has been in constant communication and has been addressing Supervisor Fletcher since he got on the Board of Supervisors. Before he was the chair, and there has been a failure to address inequity in the foster care system. He continues to side swipe this conversation, but he needs to know that you continue to side swipe this conversation, it will be a problem. For your your political future. I can guarantee you mark my words on that. This is and and look, this is not political, but it is. It's always political. And so people say, oh Shane, you know, they want to say, oh Shane, it's not political. Stop getting political. No, it's political. It's political. Everything's political. Everything happens around politics. I know this game. I've been in it a long time. I know what's happening on the board floor. And there needs to be responsibility taken. The supervisor should apologize publicly to these young people. I'll take questions. All right, uh we will be in touch. We'll grab somebody real quick. Let me, let me say this also. Uh we we are, you know, asking for the Board of Supervisors. Today, we began a calling campaign. That has gone into uh all of the supervisors. Uh it's happening among alumni, students. Everybody's kind of calling in. Um I know that the Child and Family Advisory Board is meeting tomorrow on March tenth. Um I was on that board last year. I sat on that board for a year. I was appointed by then Supervisor Kristen Gaspar. And one of the things that I saw on that board was there was a complete negligence. In talking to lived experience individuals, even though they had us sitting there. And because I'm a fighter, I spoke up. But a lot of young people on that board have been pushed aside, former foster youth have been threatened. To, you know, politically threatened and that they should be diplomatic. Look, being diplomatic is 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 nice. But don't want, don't ask for diplomacy if you're not granting it. That's what I would say to the chairman of the board because he started off Supervisor Fletcher started off last week's Board of Supervisors meeting. By saying, oh, well, we um we, you know, don't, we don't, we don't want. Uh you know, San Pasquale Academy is a state issue and I just want to know, I know everybody's getting ready to speak. But please be diplomatic, please be fair. We've been fair. We've been communicating with his office. Me, over the course of the last two years on inequity in the foster care system, others throughout this issue over the last few weeks. And uh there's continued to be an ignoring kind of 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 hearing these young people. We've been pushed to have to go to this level. There's been a lot of work that we've done behind the scenes. This is not just a press conference without work being done. And then I've taken a tour here myself. I've talked to the students, like Iman. They don't, they don't want the school to close. So. Yeah, do we have that? Okay. All right. That concludes our press conference today. Thank you.